I'll call this meeting to order September 30th, 2025. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, please acknowledge now. We have Owen here, Born Enterprise. Please refrain from flash photography, please. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they may do so by calling the following conference line: 1-929-205-6099. Zoom meeting ID 89712293538. Password, all caps, BORN. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who -- sorry. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. Let's have a moment of silence for our troops and our public safety personnel. Salute to the flag.
For your license.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you. Okay. So, I don't know if we have anybody here for public comment? Okay, great. So, public comments on non-agenda items are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each of our meetings. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to the posting requirement of the open-meeting law, and please come up.
Keith Barber, Precassett Water Quality Coalition. So, I would like to get on the record our thanks and appreciation to the many groups and people who helped us build our rain gardens. So, the three of them were completed on the 17th of September. We still have some work to do tweaking things and working on the plants. So, the simple solution, our goal when we started this in 2019 was to be able to enable shellfishing inside the restricted area between Wabash and Hill Street. So, that area's been closed for 40 years, and pretty much anybody who we asked said it was because of stormwater runoff. So, we want to thank the board and Marlene in the beginning when we came and asked for permission to do this project, and we had a nice letter from Marlene supporting us, and the board supported it. So, you know, we really are thankful, not only to you people, but also more members of the town of Bourne. The conservation agent, Stevie Fitch, and Bob Gray were extremely helpful for us. Tim Lyden, another great asset, and Tim's project coming up with the new storm drains kind of works together with our project, and we're going to make Hen Coke turn around. I just got to live long enough. Also, to the DPW, Matt Swickie was extremely helpful. Southeastern New England Partnership, which was founded by Congressman Keating, our coordinator, Tom Erdito. Special, special thanks, Dan Barnett from Cape Cod and Cape Coral Imagineering designed and engineered the entire project and expected no payment. CMS Landscaping, the guys did an unbelievable job. That's Chris Markinson's. Kiwi signs, we have QR codes around all three of the gardens, and people are using them, and it's a great asset. Mahoney's in Falmouth gave us a great bargain on our plants. The APCC, Association of Preserve Cape Cod, we used their information regarding plants and other things we did. We had -- Born Community TV did a fantastic job. I'm sure some of you have seen their video. We had 20 students from Upper Cape Technology Environmental Program who came and helped us on Tuesday, the 16th. We couldn't have done it without them. They're strong like bulls. We had over 30 of our neighbors and friends come to help us. It was a great community project. No one drove. Everybody lived close enough. I'm over my three minutes. Everybody lived close enough.
You guys probably timed that for me.
Close enough to walk, and it was -- we made a bunch of new friends. The whole camaraderie side of it was something we never expected, and it really was a great time, and I thank you for your time to let me -- appreciate everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Okay, moving on. Thank you for that. So, next, we have a public hearing. Liquor license amendment for Ryan Family Amusements LLC, change of officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of ownership interest. We have our --
Good evening.
It's here.
Members of the board, I'm Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth, and I represent Ryan Family Amusements LLC. Do want to introduce Bill Campbell, who's the president of Ryan Family, and this is regarding the property literally across the street over 200 Main Street. They currently hold an annual beer and wine license there, and if you remember, I did appear, I think by Zoom, in June and in July to request some changes to Ryan Family Amusements, Inc., to an LLC, and also some presidents to managers in different forms. We're now at the second step, because if you didn't know, but Ryan Family Amusements is being sold, and so this is part of the application process to have it transferred to new owners. But Ryan Family Amusements LLC will continue to hold the license. The current manager on that license is Pamela Yesino, and she will continue to be the manager at that location, but because of the other changes in players, shall we say, that's what makes this necessary. So, I will tell you that we did approach the ABCC with this entire two-step, and I guess it was three-step, process that was their recommendation that we do that in this manner, in this order. That's why we've been chipping away at this. But I think that the application speaks for itself. If you have any questions, I hope I can answer them, but I believe that the board can approve these amendments.
I appreciate it, and I had to open the public hearing, but that was -- you're quick, so let me just do that and say that language, just so we do the right thing here.
Do it again.
So, I appreciate it. So, I said what we were here for. Under chapter 138, as the licensing authority, the Bourne Select Board has received an application from Ryan Family Amusements LLC to consider change in officer, director, LLC manager, change in ownership interest for the annual all-alcohol general on-premise license. I hereby open this public hearing for that application. As the first order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the legal notice provided by the town for this public hearing, two, a copy of the application and supporting materials provided to the town of Bourne, dated application filing date. And having heard those actions, I will now open the floor to the applicant, which you just spoke, who may speak concerning the application, which we just heard. And now, I would open it to public comment. A little backwards there. I apologize for that, but I won't make you repeat it.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone here for public comment that would like to comment on this? Open the floor for this, for anyone? Okay, select board, any comments?
Welcome back.
I know. Right.
Thanks. Yeah, I made the drive today.
I love it. Okay, so there's no questions from there. All right, so at this point, the licensing authority will now deliberate on the application. I'm not closing the public record at this time. That way, if the deliberations identify additional questions for or information that we need for the applicant, we will be able to receive those answers or information into the record for our deliberations. So, now, we can deliberate and go to vote if there is no deliberation.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the liquor license amendment for a change in officers, directors, LLC managers, and change of ownership interest for Ryan Family Amusements LLC, 200 Main Street, Puzzles Bay, Massachusetts.
Second.
Second. Motion from MJ, second from Ann Marie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Yep. So, now, we need a motion to -- we need a vote to motion to close the hearing.
Second. What we already did by taking the vote for the motion.
Yeah, she just -- Ann Marie just asked me to close the hearing, so.
Okay. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Okay, moving on. So, number seven, we have an introduction this evening for a no-parking zone for Circuit Ave as requested by area residents. Do we have someone here to speak on this?
Keith just left.
Yeah, I was actually expecting Keith to speak on it, since it's his request.
Oh, all right. Did he? I wonder if he forgot we had it on the agenda this evening?
You know, he left.
He did.
He left, left? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Okay, so maybe we could just go over it and maybe talk -- do you want to -- do you rather not?
So, this is not a recommendation from us. This is not a recommendation from Matt or me. This is a request. So, I'm not comfortable speaking for the requester, so I'm happy to put it back on a future agenda. I was expecting Keith to speak to it.
Yeah, I think that just being involved with the project, because I live in the neighborhood, the request was driven by other rain gardens that have been installed, and people unknowingly park on top of them, and these are really close to the edge of the road. So, the concern is that all the work that we've done could be ruined if our people are parking along the way. Matt, did you review?
I didn't.
Yeah, you -- yeah.
All right, so maybe we should -- I think at this point, if Keith isn't here, maybe we should just defer it and table it and put it on another agenda.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Want a motion to defer? Motion to defer, take no action and continue.
All right, motion made by Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jean. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean.
Can we comment?
Oh, did you want to? Okay, sure.
I thought the pictures told the story. I thought they went to the police department. I thought they went to the GPW. I wanted to say, I like the signs that have arrows saying which side. I was like, yay, I like those signs.
Yes, signs are key.
So, I'm willing to vote for it. I don't think it's necessary, but.
Okay, yeah, is there -- do we need to have Keith here, too?
As long as you're not looking for a recommendation from the staff.
Sure.
If you want to just make -- if you want to do it, that is fine. Just.
When I withdraw my motion?
All right, so Peter's withdrawn his motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it as under the conditions set forth in the DPW letter to us.
Okay, so we have a motion from Peter.
Second.
Second from Jean. Do we have any further discussion at this point?
I think there's a bigger issue with parking down there than just putting up these signs near the rain garden, which perhaps could be put on a --
Put on a future agenda.
A future agenda.
Yeah.
You know?
Good point.
Yeah. Without this no parking, it's going to become -- yeah, and I don't disagree with not having the park, with protecting the rain gardens, but there's a big issue with parking in there in general.
It's all we do, too, right? We used to shellfish there quite a bit when my kids were little, and it's always been a struggle. The area of the rain gardens aren't -- the areas by the Town Landing are okay. There's certain areas by the rain garden, and most of it is sidewalk on the bottom of the Circuit Ave side, and there's just a small area.
Right.
Town Landing, so.
Well, the problem is people park trucks with trailers that -- right along the road, and that becomes a real issue.
But that's a future agenda.
But that's a future agenda.
I mean, I think.
No, I'm just saying, if we're talking about parking.
Yes, we are.
And I'm commenting that there's a big issue down there with parking in general.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with putting up the signs of protecting the rain garden. I absolutely don't.
This time of year, I don't know.
This time of year is not an issue, but in the peak of the season, it's, yeah.
Okay, so are we voting? All right, so we have a motion from Peter, second from Jean. I'm going to go around the room. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Unanimous, 5-0. Okay. So, now, we have a discussion, authorization for the south side fire station, request the governor to file special legislation to ratify, validate, and confirm the town's May 20th, 2025 annual town election and all actions taken pursuant thereto.
Thank you. So, I do have Barry on the phone as well as Erica online, and the situation that we have here is that the ballot question for the dead exclusion for the fire station was not posted as part of the election warrant. So, when bond counsel was going through all of our information to get ready for us to take the bonds to market, they asked to see that documentation, and that's when we determined that it was not included in the posting of the election warrant. So, there is a procedural solution, and Barry can speak to kind of the steps he's taken in the meantime, but Barry has reached out to our legislative delegation who has alerted the governor's office that this is the situation that we are in, and the select board can ask that the governor file this legislation on our behalf that states that the question was on the ballot and it passed, and this was the vote. So, Barry, is there anything you would like to add?
Sounds like he's in one of those areas on the other side.
Oh, he has to unmute his phone.
Barry, you just muted yourself.
Star six, if you're on your phone.
It's not letting him unmute. Yeah.
I don't know if you heard me the first time, Barry, but if you try star six, it'll take you right off mute.
He had it backwards.
Yeah, because he was on it.
Yeah, he could be having trouble if he's on the other side of the bridge.
I think he was unmuted before.
He was, yeah.
He was.
Oh.
Oh. Still to detect your microphone.
Oh, maybe it's us.
No, it's not.
Yeah, no, I know. Okay, I see it now.
Erica, is there anything you'd like to add?
I don't have anything specific to add. I know that Barry has been working with our legislative delegation and getting them ahead of the situation, so as soon as we have hopefully your support for the vote tonight, we can move this forward and get this on the governor's desk or to bring forward or another vote.
Okay, all right, so we need to -- so, can I just?
Go ahead, please.
So, I assume this is not the first time that this has happened, if they already have a workaround for it.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's on the ballot, it's a question on the ballot, passes the ballot. Everyone knew it was coming, so, yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm ready to ratify.
All right. Jean? All right, I think I've heard all I need to hear as well, so does somebody want to make a motion so that we can file this?
Motion to request the governor to file special legislation to ratify, validate, and confirm the town's May 20th, 25 annual town election and all actions taken pursuant thereto.
Second.
All right, Ann Marie made the motion. We have a second from Peter. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. All right, thank you, Barry. Thank you. Thank you, MJ. All right, moving on. Okay, review and vote all special town meeting articles, motions, and recommendations. And I guess we'll start with A, or, you know, how do we want to work these on A?
Madam Chair, I recommend, starting on page 23 in your packet, is the draft voter handbook.
Okay.
I'd recommend that you just start with Article 1 and work down.
All right. I'm on 23 right now. So, we have Article 1, to see if the town will vote to hear reports and recommendations of committees, town, and state officers, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Motion to support Article number one.
You say recommend approval.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Look, I recommend approval of Article 1. I keep forgetting Michelle Forthaus would always say that.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend approval of Article 1 by Peter, second by Ann Marie. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Okay. All right. We go down to two.
And Article 2 is the operating budget adjustment that we spoke about a couple of meetings ago. This includes the settlement of the IAFF collective bargaining agreement, the COLA for the Bourne Employees Association. It includes the change of one library personnel from part-time to full-time, and it also is using an additional $100,000 from the ambulance reserve account to offset the fire department salary line.
All right, thank you for that explanation. So, Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of supplementing and/or reducing the FY 2026 regular annual expenses of the departmental expenses as voted under Article 2 fiscal year 2026 budget of the 2025 annual town meeting, or to take any other action in relation to. Do we have a motion to recommend? Article 2?
Move approval.
Second. All right, Peter?
Yes.
And Jean is the second?
Yeah.
All in favor, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Might as well keep it simple so we can get down the road tonight.
I have a question about.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Explanations or if we have something different for the explanation, is that to be discussed at the moderators' meeting or now, or just in general as we go through these?
Well, C and D are discuss article assignments and presentation and review draft voter handbook, so you can certainly bring it up tonight.
Yeah. All right. So, we have, all right, moving down to Article 3. Thank you, MJ.
Melissa, can I confirm if that -- was that a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, we have Article 3, to see if the town will vote to approve, borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money to the capital stabilization fund, or take any other action in relation thereto.
And I would like to just confirm for the board that we are -- the motion is to transfer $368,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund, which was the excess host community fee above $600,000.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
I have a question, because this is about a little bit less than last year, which is sort of unusual, because there's a cost of living. Is that a timing for, like, receipt or accounts receivable with ISWAM? Why, it generally goes up instead of down. I was just curious.
No, this is, I mean, this is how the books closed, so it does -- it's not a timing issue. This is the access that was closed out at the end of FY '25.
Yeah, I understand that, but the excess at the end of '25 is less than the excess at the end of '24, and for ISWAM, sometimes it's a timing thing, where, like, you know, they have 400,000 of accounts receivable, so they would have had more if it closed out in time, because we're cash, it's cash accounting. I was just curious. If there's no explanation, there's no explanation. I just found it unusual, that's all. And do we know what the balance in the capital stabilization is now?
Erica might have that answer for us, I can -- or Marlene, yeah?
Madam Chair, so the capital stabilization balance is $1,724,309.25.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have?
Motion to recommend approval of Article 3.
All right, so MJ recommends approval, Article 3, second by Ann Marie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0, unanimous. Okay, so number four. Do you see?
Sorry, so number four is the omnibus capital article. I do want to let the select board know that the fire department was successful in both of their grants.
Excellent.
The town will receive $295,454.54 in federal funds for -- towards the forestry vehicle, and the town will also receive $505,645.45 in grant monies for the replacement of the SCBA. The SCBA award was slightly less than we asked for, so the fire chief has worked with Erica to increase the share, the local match, by 200,000. So, the local match for the fire department request for the SCBA will be $500,500. And with that increase, we are recommending that become a borrowing line item. Those were the only two updates since you last discussed the items.
Thank you. So, I'm just for the people at home. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2026 capital budget, Part 2, or take any other action in relation thereto. Do we have a motion for recommended approval? So, did you want to discuss it? Let me just wait, let me ask that first, sorry. Any further discussion?
Thank you. One of my questions was, we're spending $475,000 in the ambulance, from the ambulance reserve fund. What amount of money is in the ambulance reserve fund right now?
The balance is $2,125,043.
And then, is that after we've already spent the budget money for the operating and what's allowed for this year, right?
That's as of 8/31.
Okay.
So, prior to town meeting.
Thank you.
Move approval of Article 4.
Okay, so we have the moved by Peter.
Second.
Second by Jean. Any further discussion, just in case somebody has another thought? All right, hearing none.
I do have another question.
Okay. See, see? That worked out just right.
We haven't had, I mean, I've watched both capital and finance committee, so I've seen what's going on with these things. We haven't had a lot of it at the select board meeting, so the opportunity to ask questions. The ambulance that is in the book for being replaced is 134, which was on the FY -- on the capital plan for being replaced in FY '28. So, are we still for FY '27 going to ask for the 133 that's on for -- is that, that's just not changing? I'm just trying to get a sense of what's happening, because they said they were trying to move it so that we'd have a single ambulance, and we're actually having two in FY '26.
Right.
And so, it may work out the same as timing, because of the way it's taking so long to get them. I was just curious. Is that the plan, do you know, Erica, to stick with the 133 in FY '27?
I know that when we did the projections to purchasing the hills now, it was called town meeting, they were still slated to request one in fiscal '27. request one in fiscal '27 and fiscal '30.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we have a motion from Peter, second from Jean. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous on number four as well. Thank you very much, okay, moving on. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of demolishing the existing roof and installing a new roof at the police station located at 35 Armory Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action in relation thereto. Article five. We can move for discussion and have Marlene or anyone speaking on this.
I have no additional information since last time you discussed.
Okay.
A question?
Please.
Just for informational purposes. It's on Facebook, but I don't intend to answer it. One of the questions that's come up is, you know, how did this happen? Like how, how did we, these things happen in the construction? Why, what was the oversight? And I thought the finance committee discussion about how our current building committees, the ISWIM building committee and the fire station committee have been very vigilant about oversight of the OPM and the design. And so hopefully that will help alleviate it in the future. But the other question was, what's the role of the building inspector? So in the GALE report, there were things about that roof that were code violations. So what is the role of the building inspector for inspecting the construction to make sure that there are no code violations?
I would have to ask Marlene that, that's another question I can answer.
With the building inspector.
I mean, no, the building inspector would have to answer that probably.
You're bringing this up as information, correct?
Well, I mean, it's a question, so, yeah.
So you're bringing it up as a question for?
Yeah, to be maybe prepared to answer.
Yeah.
Just in case, yeah, it's just something.
Thank you. All right. So do we have a motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend approval of Article five.
Second.
Okay, so motion by MJ.
Second by Jean.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I got used to that roll call thing for a bit there. I can divert from my regular process. Okay. Unanimous for that as well. All right, moving on. Article six. I'll read this one, it's a long one. To see if the town appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the school committee to pay feasibility study and schematic design costs related to a potential accelerated repair project involving the removal, replacement, and/or refurbishment of the shingled roofs and BUR gymnasium roof at Bourne Middle School located at 77 Waterhouse Road, which proposed repair would project, would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational programs and for which the town has applied for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need and determined by MSBA. And if the MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA and proposed project, any town costs incurred in excess of the grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA's shall be sole responsibility of the town, or to take any other action relative thereto. Sorry, that was a long one.
Motion to recommend approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend approval already? Any further discussion?
Second.
All right, second from, I'll give that one to Anne Marie, I heard it first. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Unanimous, five, zero. All right, Article seven, moving on, moving on. And then get down there. Okay, to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of planning, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new garage and office building and ancillary space at the integrated solid waste facility, ISWIM on MacArthur Boulevard, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action in relation thereof, thereto, sorry. Okay. You look like you need to say, I, I need the, no?
Motion.
I was waiting. Okay, so Anne Marie, motion to approve recommendation. Do we have a second by Peter? Any further discussion?
Yes. The last four, five, six, and seven, two-thirds super majority to kind of respond, and so just people, to let people know at home, it's not just going to be a simple, a simple vote. You know, you need two-thirds because you're borrowing money. I mean, it doesn't make a big of a difference under remote control voting these days, but just the public should know.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so.
Yeah, I just was curious about, once we add this borrowing to our authorizations for borrowing, like where, where are we at in terms of borrowing authorizations total?
None exempt or both?
Doesn't matter. I, I ask because it's been a question the bond rate, the bonding company, when they do our bond ratings, has been looking at. Do you know?
So as of June 30th, our total and unissued debt is 24,908,000. And this town meeting would add 3,975,500 from the general fund, and 23,900,000 from ISWIM enterprise fund.
Is the transfer station a design borrowing?
It is not.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that was a 24,908? Was that unauthorized borrowing?
Authorized and unissued.
Okay. And what about issued?
Well, the total authorization, that's been issued and not yet issued.
Is 24,908.
24,908,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Article seven. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion from here? Hearing none at this moment. All signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous, five, zero. Thank you very much. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of design and engineering of a new transfer station to be constructed at the integrated solid waste management facility, ISWIM on MacArthur Boulevard, including the cost of securing the owner's project manager and design to develop said design, and all other costs incidental or related thereto, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Okay.
Motion to recommend approval.
All right, so we have motion.
Second.
By Anne Marie. Second by MJ. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous, five, zero, zero. Article three. To see if the town will vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate a sum for design and engineering funds for the Monument Beach Marina, and to meet said appropriation to transfer from available funds or reserves from the FY 2026, estimated Community Preservation Fund revenues, a sum of money for the purpose of this article, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Do we have a motion to approve?
Recommend approval of Article.
Second.
All right, so. Second, Peter, I have to write these out, I'm sorry, I'm going to be a minute. Okay. Any further discussion on this article? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye, if I didn't say it loud enough. Okay, five, zero, zero. Article 10, moving right away, right along here. To see if the town will vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of money for the Sagamore Cemetery, and to meet appropriation to transfer from available funds or reserves from the FY 2026, estimated Community Preservation Fund revenues, a sum of money for the purpose of this article, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Peter. Second by Anne Marie. Any further discussion on this, Article 10?
With the hours in the audience.
He is.
Say something?
Okay.
Would you like to say something?
He said he, he's got. No, okay.
I'll be very brief. Because I think you all got the application and the photos. You know we're not imagining what could happen. It has happened. So much history of the town of Bourne is on those stones. I could take all night, but I won't.
I know.
So I don't know if there's anything else I can add except that the cemetery, it may not sound like a great place to hang out, but people in our village don't have a park. They walk their dogs there, they go in because they've been working remotely. And we have the canal nearby, which is great. But this is, might be nearer to some other people. And they enjoy it because we do our best to maintain it. But this is, this goes way beyond maintenance. It's an expanded project. If we don't do this, I mean, I'll probably cry because the town, the information that's on those stones to educate future generations will, once it's gone, it's gone. These trees have been getting bigger and bigger. And we, we've spent our own money from the cemetery income in taking these huge trees. They may be pretty, but they're not pretty when the wind comes up. We go up afterwards, we never know what we're going to see. And we've been shocked and horrified several times. And we realize we can't just take a couple of trees down at a time. We, and we need help financially in order to do it all at once, and as soon as possible before the next storm. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But the six other meetings that I've been to, they've all supported us. I won't name them, they're in your applica, no, they're not. They, they did support us, the, I, you know them.
Historical Community Preservation.
Preservation Society and the, and the public hearing. And we hope you'll join them because you are at the top of the power pyramid in Bourne. And your, your recommendation would mean a lot and hopefully convince the voters at town meeting to support us. Thank you very much, if you have any questions.
So before I say anything, I'll go around from, come on, comments from you all first.
I have this at a court town meeting, so, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, we got to protect our silent neighbors in there. And, you know, it's, it's a great use of CPC funds for it.
Anyone else?
I, I just want to say, I listened to your presentation at the finance committee. And between you and Jerry, your knowledge of the history of the town of Bourne and your work to preserve it is very impressive. And I think it's a really, this is a really important project. I mean, the, the history of the town from the beginning is, is there. And it's, it is really important. So thank you for bringing it up.
Anyone else?
It is important, it's, it's not work for us. I could use some, but it's not for us. This is a project that will benefit the town in perpetuity.
Thank you.
So I'm going to add to this because it, you know, cemeteries are sort of my baby. I'm, as many of you know, I'm Wampanoag. And, you know, it's not odd that you hang out in the cemeteries. We, we deeply respect our dead. And our ancestors are, are the highest of honor. But we hang out at the cemetery. You know, I have some of my best memories as a child as playing at that Indian burial ground on Little Sandy Road as a little girl. We go there during holidays, all different times, and it's very, very special. So it is, it can be a place of joy, and it can be a place to be happy. So I appreciate that you said that. And I just want to say, you're so right, you said about the trees. I had a walk with one of the Mass Historic, the archaeologist from Mass Historic. And he said to me, Melissa, the only thing that's a danger to your headstones is the trees above. So I, I totally agree. So, all right, do we have motion? We already did, that's right. We have Peter, a motion from Peter, and a second from Anne Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Love that. All right, let's see. Well, this is a long one. Do we need, want me to read this one?
This is for the.
I'd like to explain this one maybe.
This is for the construction easements that we need to do the intersection improvement at Barlow's Landing Road and Shore Road. One easement is at six, excuse me, 369 Barlow's Landing Road, and it is for 57 square feet. And one easement is at 375 Barlow's Landing Road, which is for 302 square feet.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation to approve this motion?
I have a, I just have a question first. There's no money in this? Is this because we don't think we're going to need to pay for it, or?
We already have the project fully funded, so we feel like there are sufficient funds.
Within the project to pay for the easements. Okay, great, thank you for that explanation.
No additional money is being appropriated in this article.
Okay, and this is for the Barlow's Landing intersection improvement? So I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article eleven.
Motion from MJ?
Second.
I'll give that one to Jean, I guess. I'll give that to you, Jean. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. All right, moving on, all right, two more.
Article number 12 is the MBTA zoning.
Okay.
So that's the multifamily housing zoning that Jennifer and the planning board discussed with you.
Okay.
Motion to recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have, that was a quick, a motion from MJ, second by Peter. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Chiki-doki. All right, moving on to the last article here. And this is our petition article. I went by it, sorry.
And I believe the petitioner is here.
Oh, wonderful, I was just going to say that. As our petitioner here, I will let them speak first.
Sure, thanks. My name's Patrick Ross, with my wife Jenny. We own and operate Cotomet Fish and Cotomet. This article would be to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to petition the general court for passage of legislation authorizing the issuance of an annual all alcohol package store license to Sea State Foods DBA Cotomet Fish.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board on this article? Or recommendations?
With me? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We have already approved this as a select board a long time ago. We wanted, when we denied license to market, we ended up approving this. So I see this in some ways as possibly just reaffirming what we've already done. So that's just my discussion point on it. I know a lot of people have other things, but I'm just putting that out there.
I can see you're thick and tell you.
Well, so in the past, when this was done for special licenses, it was a store that had a license. There was a seasonal license, and that was made a full-time license. And then they took away the seasonal licenses after. And in the town meeting explanation, there was, these licenses were not supposed to be transferable. They were supposed to stay with the business. But the way the special legislation was written, some of them were transferred, some of them did end up being expired. So, but, but they remained as licenses. So we have, there were five special, special legislation licenses, and we have five.
legis- legislation licenses. And we have five special legislation licenses, and we have five quota licenses now. So I don't know if, I don't know what happens aft, if the special legislation license is approved. Does it still come back to the Select Board for approval of the license? Does it approve the license as previously approved? The limits that were put on the license that were previously approved apply? Or is it just a license? I mean, I, I don't.
Do we not have an available license?
We do have an available, well.
So why do we need to get another one?
Well, I, well.
Why can't Katomet Fish apply for a license that we have available in the town?
If Market Basket wins their appeal, then the license won't be available that we previously issued to Patrick. So this is another.
Then I think this is putting the cart before the horse. I mean, to go through this process when.
But it adds an additional license.
It adds an additional license. And do we need an additional license? Is there a need for an additional special license when we have one available? We currently now have one available, do we not?
Or is it in limbo?
No, we currently have it. We denied it. There's no limbo going on right now.
Have they appealed? When do they appeal by?
I know Marlene's being very careful.
Yeah, so I, I am gonna be, I need to be careful. This is a, this is an article about Katomet Fish, not an article about Market Basket.
So.
So, if I may.
Yes.
My understanding is that if the, the whole process played out and the special legislation license was, was issued to us, that license can be forfeited at any time if, if the quota license, if Market Basket ultimately exhausts all their appeals and that quota license would then come to us, at that point in time, the special legislation license would be sunset.
I know that for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get too far in the weeds here. I don't want to make the, I want to make sure we're very, very clear on what we're discussing. And that's this petition.
For.
For this private petition tonight.
For special legislation.
Special legislation, yes.
We, that, that is not specified in the motion or the articles, not specified in the article, the terms of the special legislation. So the special legislation terms, we have no control of. And, and this, this is what happened the last time. The special, this is the way the, this is the way the petitions were written the last time, when they did this. And then the discussion at town meeting told the voters that this, these were the terms, and this is what was gonna happen. But when the legislation was written, that's, it's not the way the legislation was written. And so that's not what happened. So special legislation is, requires monitoring to, to do it. Now, I, I don't know how the board feels. I, I'm not, I, I know the Finance Committee voted not to recommend. I, I.
I'm sorry. The Finance Committee didn't take any action.
They did last night.
Oh, they did last night.
Yeah, the Finance Committee did vote last night not to recommend the passage of this article by a vote of four to one to one.
Four to one to one.
Four, four to one. It was.
Four, one, one.
Four, one, one to deny or not recommend.
To not recommend it.
Yeah.
Four not to recommend.
Four not to recommend, one to recommend, and one abstaining.
Right.
In the past, what we've done is, with, with private petitions, we've taken no position, you know, to just lead the politics out of the room.
Sometimes, sometimes not.
I don't know. It, I'm, I don't.
Anyone else? Jean, do you have any thoughts or comments? Thinking. It's okay, it's okay to think. I mean, this is a difficult, you know, as I said, it's complicated a bit because we have so, there's so many unknowns, I think. For me, I'm just a little nervous about what it means and what information we need.
We could make a recommendation at town meeting. We could see motion, we could make a recommendation.
Yeah, we can wait for the night of town. We can wait till the night of town meeting and then make a recommendation.
Can we do that? Maybe that would be the best idea because I don't really feel like I know enough. And I don't want to deny it and not have the right information and then not, want to make the recommendation later.
It's always difficult to make a recommendation on the night that you hear from the, the article.
Sure.
It's, you know, because then you, you feel like you didn't have time to contemplate.
Make a motion that the recommendation will be made the night of town meeting.
Okay. So we have a motion from Peter to recommend at town, to make the decision at town meeting.
Recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, the recommendation will be made at town meeting.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second from MJ. Any further discussion? Okay. I think I'll do, I'll just do, I'll do a roll call on this one just because I think it's, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes, I'm just making the recommendation.
On making the recommended, yes. Jean? Yes. Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes, for the recommendation at town. So it's a unanimous to make our recommendation at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're done, we're through the, the bad part. Okay, so now we are at designate essential and contingent articles.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we deem essentials out of those two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. And I didn't, not see any contention in the war, in the handbook or the warrant. Am I right? There were no contingents?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
All right, so, I'm sorry, two, four, five?
Two, four, five, six, seven.
Sorry, I have to write the seven, eight.
Two and then four through eight.
Right. All right, so we have, Peter made the motion.
MJ second.
MJ second. My, my handwriting's terrible, Marlene, so I hope you can read my hieroglyphs. Chicken scratching right this minute. Okay, so, and essentials articles are two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous on the essential articles. Okay, so we need to designate Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, for a second night of town meeting if necessary.
So move.
Second.
All right, so, motion, Peter, second. MJ, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. C, discuss article assignments and presentations. So, let me just go the articles real quick. And I think I have consensus on the articles that everybody, I'd sent them out and went back and forth a little bit and made a couple of adjustments. So we have myself, Articles two and five. Jean has four, 11, and 12. MJ has Articles three and six. Peter has seven, eight, and 10. And Anne Marie has one, nine, and 13. Is everybody happy with those assignments? Okay. And then, let's see. And then presentations, do, what do we, I guess it's part of this, so we'll discuss that as part of it. I know I'm gonna work on a presentation. I think that was lacking last time for this police station article. You know, it was one of those things. I felt that my, it was just gonna, I honestly never thought it wouldn't get voted positively. So that was something that we really want to work on this year. So I know that MJ is very good with hers each year. Her, her presentations, as is Anne Marie. I think we've all done this before. So I don't know, is there anything new with the presentations we need to talk about?
You know, what I'll do is, I'll sit, I'm sorry. I'll sit down with, he suggested from my sense, we're on the building committee together, so we can.
Yeah, I kinda thought some of the articles we thought would work for you because you were on those committees better because you know them. Okay.
I guess the only other question I would have about Article 12, we can discuss with the moderator how much of that I'm supposed to read into the record at the night.
Okay. We can do that.
So, can I, I'm sorry, ma'am here. Article 11 is Jean, and Article 12 is Jean?
Yes.
And Article 13 is Anne Marie?
Yes.
Which I have.
Yes, three.
No, I, I mean, that one's not, that one's gonna be difficult.
I know, I know.
Just let the petitioner speak.
So Jean's question about.
The MBTA.
The MBTA. You don't read the article.
Right.
The planning board will make the recommendation.
They make the motion.
They make the motion.
So you just make the recommendation.
Gotcha.
The Select Board recommendation.
Okay, okay. All right.
Do we know if we have any committee reports?
I have not heard of any committee reports yet.
Yeah, not a committee report, but one Cape Summit was.
No, no, I mean, the, for Article one.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I love your enthusiasm. It's been a long weekend. It's only Tuesday. Okay.
Feels like a month.
Okay, it really has. All right, so we've discussed that. Articles are good. We're all good. We don't need to vote on that, do we? No.
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 So review the draft voter handbook. I've done that. Do we need to vote on that and prove that?
No, I have a couple of things to add from tonight.
Sure, let's do that. Thank you, Marlene.
No, no, I just have to add your votes from tonight and then we'll.
Oh, okay. I thought you had some things to add.
Nope.
Perfect. We're moving great right along. All right. So we are at number 10 is our consent agenda. We have execute the warrant for the 2020 to the October 20th, 2025 special town meeting. Bourne Recreation Department requesting banner across Main Street to promote trunk or tree, woo, woo, event 10:30. C is the Mass Maritime Parents Association requesting a banner across Main Street to promote the Christmas Craft Fair, woo, woo. Bourne Football Booster Club, permission to have a bonfire for the annual Bourne Canalman Football Bonfire on November 25th, 2025, 75 Waterhouse Road. And then E is set rates for private snow plowing contractors for 2025, 2026 winter season. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Peter, second from MJ. All in favor?
Question?
Oh, wait, sorry, yeah. There you go, Peter. Any further discussion?
Private snow plowing rates, are they just cost of living adjustments, basically, the little bit of increase there is? And do we have a, are we having a problem getting people to apply for these positions?
So we didn't do an increase this year. We did a 5% increase last year, which was substantial. And our rates are still very competitive when we did the comparison. So this year there's no increase. We had 12 contractors in '23, '24, and we had 10 last year. Those 10 have been consistent people we've had for a long time. Every town is struggling getting, getting contractors. It's, you know, we're, we're very fortunate because we have the 10 people that have been very good to us over the years. But I, I have a feeling we're never gonna see 20 or 25 snowplow contractors again. I think we're gonna see it, no matter what we're paying, going down and down and down over the years.
I just want to thank you in advance because every year we have our roads, you know, maintained and they're safe, you know, during the snow season, you know, you know, all, all year round. But I'm just saying, for the snow season, we know we don't have to wear it. So I want to say thank you in advance.
Yeah, I mean, I come from a family of, you know, snowplow. My husband, he had to plow for years. And, you know, the hard part with it is that, you know, you buy the truck, beat your truck, beat your equipment, you're killing yourself. You're doing front-end work continuously. Yeah, it's hard. So it's like almost not worth it in the end. You're like, I made a grand in a week, but then you're putting brakes in, so, yeah.
Trucks are getting more and more expensive and insurance is getting more and more expensive.
Parts, yeah.
Thank you. I mean, it takes.
Ball joints. Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for your work. Yeah, I agree. All right, so.
And we'll hope for a snow in the mountains only.
That's it.
Not at sea level.
A little bit, yeah.
Not at sea level.
Just at Christmas.
No, in the mountains.
I can dream of snow. That's good enough. Okay, so motion by Peter, second by MJ. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, five, zero, zero. Moving on, we have Town Administrator's Report. Wow, I'm gonna get my phone.
The schedule for the scenic highway median project has been updated slightly. Night work is now scheduled to begin on Sunday, November 9th, with work hours from 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Invasive vegetation management began this week, and tree clearing is expected to begin on November 3rd. Barnstable County IT has confirmed that the town has fewer than 20 devices that are running Windows 10 and are not able to be upgraded. We have sufficient funds in place and are in the process of replacing those machines. The scheduled start to the work at the Queen Sewell parking lot is slightly delayed. The draining, drainage components are still being fabricated, and the town has not yet received them. However, we still anticipating having most of the work completed before Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, we were not successful in our complete streets grant application for the intersection at Shore Road and Barlow's Landing Road. However, town meeting has appropriated sufficient, town meeting has appropriated sufficient funds, and we intend on moving forward with the project and anticipate starting construction in the spring. The planning board has tentatively scheduled the Cape Way Cannabis Project for site plan review on October 23rd. On September 18th, I intend, I attended a pre-application meeting for the current grant round that DEP has opened for NSA watersheds. Eligible projects include planning activities that contribute to the development of a watershed permit application and/or a watershed management plan. I will submit a grant application to the program by the October 14th deadline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, minutes.
The minutes, yes.
Make a motion that we approved the minutes of 9:2, 9:3, and 9:19, 2025, as submitted.
Okay, so we have a motion from Peter to approve the minutes. Motion from Peter.
Second.
Second from Anne Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five, zero, zero. Committee reports, do we have any correspondence?
Correspondence. Okay, September 30th, 2025, A, Chapter 91 Application, 80 McGansett Road, Construction and Maintenance of Pier Ramp, Pier Ramp and Float. B, Talent Bank Form R Everett Capital Outlay. C, Talent Bank Form K Benedict Bourne Cultural Council. D, Talent Bank Form Chris Crane Bourne Cultural Council. E, Talent Bank Form B McNamie Capital Outlay. F, Mass DOT Files Environmental Impact Report for Replacement of Bridges Notice. G, Email G Berman Regarding DEP Grant for Watershed Permit. H, Invite to Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates Regarding Hearing on Transfer Fee of Luxury Real Estate Tax. I, Email From R Hapgood Regarding Parking of MMA Students on Taylor's Point. J, Corcoran Email Regarding High Ridge Gate. K, Heb Email Regarding High Ridge Gate. L, Upper Cape Tech Meeting Minutes From 7:10, 25. M, Email From Mass DOT Al Powansky Regarding Bridges. EIR An Upcoming Open House At 9:25, 25. N, Email From J Proudey Regarding Bayview Campground Possible Closure In 2026. O, Email From S Tierney Regarding High Ridge Road Gate. P, P Waters Email Regarding Sidewalk Wind Check. Q, P Waters Email Regarding Meeting. R, Ribbon Cutting Invite To Cape Cod Billiards. S, Email From WBUR Regarding Bridges In Eminent Domain. T, Green Communities Newsletter. U, Carboni Sewer Abatement Request. That is the end of the correspondence.
Lot of correspondence.
And then I just wanted to take a minute, if I could, to review some policy, basic policy for us and for other people. We've been getting a lot of correspondence from people and a lot of requests from people.
Thank you, Jean.
Things are very busy. And this policy is on our website, and the Policy Subcommittee for the Select Board has heard this before. But I just wanted to read it into the record for everyone again. So this is page six and seven of 10, and it's Section 8, Correspondence Procedures. These procedures explain how correspondence is handled by the Select Board once received and what correspondence are included in the public packet of a Select Board meeting. There will be a correspondence agenda item at each Select Board meeting to notify the public of correspondence received by the full Select Board. Correspondence may include, but are not limited to, the following: Communications from town, state, or federal agencies; communications from town committees or boards; announcements of nonprofit events; letters or emails to full Select Board to notify the Board of an event or opinion on an issue; or to request that the Select Board address a specific issue. or to request that the Select Board address a specific issue at a public meeting. Correspondence to an individual Select Board member will only be included in the Board's packet when the Select Board member notifies the Chair with a request to include it in the meeting materials. If the Chair determines it should be included, the Chair will instruct the town administrator to place it in the packet for the next meeting. When an individual Select Board member receives correspondence from a citizen that requires staff action, it is recommended that the Board member reply and have the citizen contact the town administrator or appropriately appropriate department head directly. Correspondence to the full Select Board will be reviewed by the Chair for consideration to be included in the public packet when it includes the name and address of the writer. Also, contact information in the form of email or telephone number must be included. Anonymous correspondence without a name and address will not be responded to or included in the public correspondence record. Correspondence received by the Select Board before noon on Thursday prior to the next meeting will be included as correspondence on the agenda, unless there's an exception due to public records applicability. The clerk of the Select Board is responsible for replying to acknowledge receipt of correspondence and for forwarding the correspondence to the Chair for review. Receipt will not be acknowledged when the Board is listed as CC recipient, and correspondence with the Board listed as CC may not be included in the public packet. Individual Select Board members may reply to a correspondence received, but to avoid an open meeting law violation, reply all should not be used when an email is received by all Select Board member and an individual member does reply. Correspondence deemed to be public record will be available in hard copy or digitally on the town's website in the applicable agenda packet. Correspondence that requires immediate action of the Board will be taken up at the next scheduled meeting. And correspondence that requires deliberation may be discussed, however, no action may be taken until it's placed as a regular item on the next available meeting agenda. Board members who would like an agenda item related to a piece of correspondence should make a request during a correspondence agenda item at the posted meeting where the correspondence is listed. Thank you, and I just wanted to add that I do reply, um, and acknowledge receipt if something's sent to all Select Board in, in a, as opposed to the submission on the general page, in which case, there's a generated reply, and possibly an additional follow-up if necessary. So.
Can I just ask a question? Are you careful not to reply using that email, that's the Civic Plus email that goes to nowhere, to go into the email and pick up their email and insert that instead?
I don't, if the generated, you mean the generated?
Yeah, the, yeah, the-
I, I don't reply. There's a generated response for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and if necessary, town administrator or staff could reply. So, everybody sees it, um, so.
Yeah, but thank you for putting that out there, because it gets confusing at times, and when I get individuals, I, I forehand just this information, but I also, like, one last week, I did answer back, please send, you know, food as pro- and I went through the process of explaining whether it's a proper procedure, and that was it.
Yeah, we've had some complications there. I'm not sure now's the time to discuss it, but we really should at some point. We've had some, some, um, Select Board that have, people have, you know, been contacted outside of, you know, the, the group. So, definitely something we need to be careful of.
Yeah, I just keep repeating mindful, you know, keep repeating policy to people if they have questions, and it's, it's, it's tough to have to just spew policy sometimes instead of feel like you're giving someone an answer. But it's really, if we all stick to it, then everything gets to the proper channels, and then the appropriate committees and boards can address issues instead of running to one person all the time, so.
Yeah, and I think it's important, too, to remember, I mean, I know we all know people, and we live in this town, and sometimes people will lean on us and want us to, you know, do something or say something needs to be done, or we might feel that we're, because we know somebody, it's okay to respond or, or do something. But I've received several emails from people that I know personally, and I treat it the same as I would, uh, somebody I don't know, because that's our job, is to be impartial.
So.
And to not do that. So, I appreciate you reading that, thank you. It's a good refresher, I like that.
We do have a method for correspondence, and we do try and give everyone the due attention, so.
Okay, do we have motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right.
Again.
Peter, Anne Marie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, there, there, thank you very much.